All right, we're Paulus Bean. My name is Chris Lynch, a school board member. So just a couple of housekeeping items. I'd like to get the intros. But first, thank you for coming. We're very excited about having a work session and being able to be a little less formal than a school board meeting, right? There's lots of things that... I do need to let you know from a housekeeping standpoint, this is a meeting of the school board, so we are following Iowa for meetings laws. So this has been posted, that we're also being taped over here, and there'll be minutes and all that good stuff, so it is public record, so just so you know that. If you're being taped, people like to tell people that, so don't... I wouldn't worry about it other than that, but it's really just an FYI. With that, I propose we go around the table and just do a round of introductions, and then maybe we can talk to each other if you want to start.
Okay, I'm Chris Lebig. I have a daughter at City High. I recognize some of you, and I'm a school board member.
I'm Kim Colvin. I'm the board recording secretary.
Kingsley Bightwood, director of equity.
Eric Schultz from Princeville, West High.
Matt Degner, assistant superintendent. I'm from Southeast.
Flavie A, from City High.
I'm Addie, I'm from City High.
I'm Victor, I'm from City High.
I'm Estha, from City.
I'm Lauren Rowland, school board member, and my kids attend West High in Littleton.
Phil Henry, school board member, and my daughter attends Alcoa.
I'm Maryam Buddha, in Albu. And you fell in love with me, and I go to West High.
I'm Lutane Hamad, and I go to West.
I'm Renee Hamad, and I go to West.
I'm Jane Mary, and I go to West.
Latasha Taylor.
Asian Parks, City High.
Brian Kershling, I have one son at Southeast and a daughter at Chicago.
Chris, but I'll finish with, I have a senior at West, and my daughter's at UNI, sophomore, she went to West as well, so... Well, great, thank you for coming. I mean, the good news tonight, I think, we have a very, pretty simple agenda, we kept it pretty broad. Students against hate and discrimination, so we'll get into that, and we really just wanted to engage with you, and I think it's pretty open where we want to take it, where you want to take it. I kind of view this as your meeting, it's your meeting with us. But perhaps a couple of simple questions. We certainly had a list of demands, right? I think there's no better... So it might be just, how's it going? And maybe a secondary question, how's it going versus the list of demands? And I would just say, too, we get it at the vol since then, but I really want to get a feel for how do you think it's going, or, you know, have we met your needs, has administrative station met your needs? That's what I'd like to hear about. I don't know if we want to flip a plane on City versus West, but does it matter? Who wants to go first?
I guess we'll go first. As far as demands, we've met, immediate demands have been pretty good. So we're obviously taking action right now, and there's been a lot of push towards creating a program towards educating students of their limits in school, which is exciting. I think that's going to be one of the things that we talk about here today. And we were still waiting on...
We're still working on the workshop. We started working with Kingsley on that, and so that's going so far.
Yeah. We haven't had the pep assembly we asked for, a while ago.
Also, I think we need to... I think we need to furthermore, like, push on the topic of teaching our teachers and administrators to enact a provided procedure when an incident has occurred, because since then, certain incidents have occurred, and I don't... Like, that paper you talked about, we didn't, that didn't happen.
Yeah, there was an incident with one of my... My sister that attended that was, someone said something to her. Nothing much happened since then. I mean, she talked to the dean, and then the dean talked to the individual who said something to her, and then that, like, nothing much happened. She didn't get any, like, paper she was supposed to file or something like that. She didn't tell me about any of that. She just went to the dean and was told, and the dean was like, "I'll just talk to the person," and nothing else happened after that. So I wasn't sure, way too open there.
And then for the sustained change, we're still, we kind of started working on the class, the ethics class that we're starting. We talked to Mr. Shutton, yeah, two teachers that are at West about the class, and that's all that's happened with the class so far. And who else?
I don't know, really, we're just really finishing up immediate demands, moving towards sustained change right now. That's from our end, that's at West.
That's it, yeah. How do you ask? What's going on, too? Yeah, so we met a couple of times, and the main thing that we have done is made a video that released the board statement, and we added a few things in of our own, which we played at advisory, and we had an opportunity for discussion.
Yeah, if classes wanted to have a discussion.
And then since winter break, we haven't really been again.
So you're happy with the progress, or not happy, or what do you...
I think we're on a good path, and we hope to do, as time goes on.
One thing that I heard from the student body in particular was that they didn't really recognize any change at school. They didn't really know what was going on, or why the video was released at City, or was purposeless, and I think that kind of didn't make it clear.
I feel like the pep assembly would make that more clear.
I agree.
Personally?
Not a pep...
Or not.
The assembly, just formatted like a pep... I think there just could have been more room to do it, rather than a demonstration.
I have a question for you guys at West. So are you guys planning for the 2017 to 2018 school year for there to be, like, some sort of class?
Yeah.
Does this really need more class?
Well, we may even have it in the third trimester. I don't think we need to get more details. It'd be like an ethics class, and so there wouldn't be, like, a specific... You know how in a lot of classes, you have a curriculum you have to follow, so you can't get to, like, a lot of topics? It would be very broad, and like, to talk about, we have it over here, diversity, it would be like a diversity class, and you could talk about all different topics and all different subjects, and anything that really, like, strikes, hits you guys, is important or whatever. Like, we could have talked about, I don't know, police brutality in that class, like, anything that's going on right now, or anything that you feel, like, we don't have time or space in the curriculum to talk about in regular classes. That has to do with diversity. And it would broaden people's, like, mindsets and open, more closed minds and et cetera.
Are you saying an ethics class or ethnic studies class? Are you saying ethic or ethnic?
Ethnic.
Yeah, so that's more of like a long-term goal that we hope to see infused into our curriculum, as a graduation requirement.
Yeah, same as health, or like any other class, or P D.
But for a little bit, like, sustained change, that's a little bit more, like, on the immediate end, we did speak to Kingsley on the solid student-directed workshop that we want to start, for, like, both of our next schools.
And the workshop would be like a yearly thing, like, every, around March, did you say? Before spring break, I think.
So March, I think it was March, first weekend on March.
Yeah.
Is what we were thinking.
And just so City, since you're here, you've been in contact with Elizabeth Brooke. I know she's, like, helping, you know, facilitate some of your group work. I've sat down with the chance to meet with you. I think that I was meeting with you last in December, and I missed that meeting for whatever reason, and so I think we should bring you now to meet again, so hopefully we'll meet soon.
Sounds good.
So you guys imagine this is more of like a meeting conference, or where there's a couple different, for the March?
For the workshop.
For the workshop. Is it more like multiple workshops in one month? Okay.
Yeah, so what we envisioned was it'd be a school-wide thing, but we'd break it down by period.
Great, great, junior, sophomores, freshmen.
We allot a certain space for each grade to go, and have, just have, like, these student, like, workshops, and the, like, the, I guess you could say, the curriculum or the program would probably be, what we came up with was awareness, prevention, and support, and, well, our...
Apps.
Apps, yeah. Or Ask, if you want to split, whatever. Whatever is most, we'll stick to your head. So awareness would be focused on what's been happening at West, so the piece where we make it relevant to the student body, and make them understand why we're doing this in the first place. Another part of awareness would be how to go about filing, filing a complaint, so just the education piece and the last part.
Which is like us learning about our rights.
Yeah. So the last part would be knowing your rights. Then the second piece of that would be prevention, which is having open conversations, so we share experiences, or just share knowledge with each other. And then we give examples of how to use your voice in school in a positive way, and how to communicate effectively with staff when that, when these things occur. And then it'd be kind of like geared, it's geared mostly towards the students, but teachers are more than welcome to come to learn about these things, because that'll be helpful to know the students from the group. And then the last part of it would be support. So we talk about, in that part of it, we talk about how to support each other, and define what support is for students, students and staff, and the teachers would need to be those facilitators of the conversations. I guess that would all work, I think.
Um...
Things must be facilitators, you know? Oh, like, teach, teachers are facilitators.
Yeah, right. We were taught, I just didn't hear about that. Like, teachers have a lot of, like, these racial bias, or whatever bias, like, courses they have to go to, and some teachers, like, we assume, like, would only, like, you've heard something, but a few teachers, like, they go to just, like, get it done or whatever. And so if you're like, and they learn it from other adults, and I feel like if us as the students were the teachers, I don't know, I feel like it would give it more power, of more volume to have what we're trying to say, and that was just an idea.
So they see it as, like, more than just, like, training, they see it as...
Yeah, as our, yeah. Our feeling, our power to us.
Yeah. So then the last couple parts of support would be, what are ways you can, so we bridge out at the end towards the community, and figure out what are ways you can impact the community, and what are ways you can support someone who's been impacted by open discrimination? So that part would be allyship. And it's also, support also for us would mean supporting people who caused the harm, actually educating them, and actually making sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, we support just for the victim, or for the support for people who are of a closed mind and not understanding, like, the power of, of...
So, and one of the, like, we didn't, we were trying to figure out ways to not make this just like a lecture-type format. Like, we want it to be really, like, workshop-oriented, like, activities.
Like, it'll sound fun, rather than just, it'd sound like we're people that sit and talk, and tell them what's right and wrong. Because I, me as a student, I wouldn't even want to go to that, you know? Like, I want to make it, like, we involve each other and involve the students and... Sorry. No, sorry. See, much in explaining grades, and anything within each grade, split into smaller groups by last name, or, or just be one big grade.
Well, we were thinking, like, we'll have, like, first and second period freshmen, and then, like, sixth, seventh, be sophomores, juniors be fifth, and then seniors would be, like, third.
And didn't we want to split it through, like, activities as well?
Yeah.
Have different things going on.
But organizationally, it would be best to do it by last name or something, to, like, make it small.
I think we could work with it, so.
So we can, we can get into that, but just like the, a general outline.
Basically, yeah.
We'd want to do it a couple periods after day.
These workshops would be led by students.
Yes.
So we just need students who are willing to learn about it and need it. Shouldn't be too hard for them. I don't know if you all are familiar with this, but the university that we used to have an annual cultural diversity festival, and I think doing something like that at the high school level would be really beneficial to just the student body as a whole.
Maybe do that at some of the elementary schools. You could talk to your family resource person at West High, is, that's who plans it at the elementary schools.
What's the family resource person?
Is there a family resource person at West High?
Yeah.
Oh, we're having it, yeah. Not in that same role, they are in that.
Okay, okay, so I don't know who would do that, that you would have to probably...
I mean, we have adversity dinner that, like, you know, runs now. I don't know if that's different, but if I was something different.
That's another cultural nice.
Yeah.
International, between us and everyone.
Okay.
So, we've given our part, now I want to hear what, I don't know, you guys think?
Sounds awesome to me. I'm simple. Well, what do you need from us? So we just said all these things, you know, what do you need from us? What do you need from administration?
How we're funding.
Well, funding. We've got a class. Funding and...
How much funding? All right, it's to be determined, that's okay. We can take, we can take funding.
Send us a...
So for the board, or maybe it's administration, but okay, funding, that makes sense. And you'll send us something, or we can talk then.
I don't know how, like, the assembly thing would work, but we need permission from you, like, for, like, us to hold an assembly.
You don't, you don't need, you certainly don't need our approval. We can help Bush to make sure that happens.
Yeah. Don't we need to talk to you about, like, the whole class thing, too? Like, aren't you guys the heads of, like, new classes or...
I appreciate y'all making us all say this.
It's a definite maybe, I think it depends.
Yeah, I think that's an administrative thing, that they have to go through some process of, for the class to be approved for high school credit. So there's some pieces there about what that looks like, but I think you guys are talking to the right people, talking to Mr. Shutton, Mr. Gross about some of that, but also what that ethnic studies class will look like at City High's school will be important, because they have to get it approved. Am I making this up?
No, you're right. I know Kingsley's worked with you guys a little bit about it, to, you know, that's why I think you probably explored the workshop idea for some more immediate reaction to that, and I think that in the long-term thing, you know, with the class, you know, you get into all the administrative red tape stuff, right? We do a program of studies and graduation requirements and some of those things, so I think that's what Director Deloche was referencing, that we would just want to work through those pieces, you know, to have that as a long-term sustained change, if that's what the board would approve and move forward with, because they approved our program of studies, that's already presented for the year, but there's still work that has to be done prior to that, right? So conversations you're having with your teachers, and some of that legwork on what that class would look like, what makes up that class, when can we get it incorporated in there? I think those are all the things we need to be talking about now to do, so that we can be positioned well, well to incorporate that when ready, or if ready. So the workshop thing, I think, is something that, as you guys continue to look at it for, something that can happen a lot faster, that you would see some of those conversations you want to have take on lots sooner.
You know, I have lots of community reports for that workshop, because that, believe it or not, that was kind of out here in the community already amongst a couple of folks that I've been working with as well, wanting to talk more about intersectionality and impact students. And so that, that, some of that groundwork is laid, so that you know that there are tons of UI folks and community folks from human rights coordinator, especially, that are extremely interested in how do we get something like that going, so you have this support.
So Matt, on these three, on these three, can you help us consolidate, if there's a funding request?
What do you mean consolidate? If you kind of put it to page of what it would look like to do a class like that? Yeah, I think that's what we would...
Now, if there's a recommendation on a West, then what's, you know, the same at City, or what's the...
Yeah, I mean, again, depending on if we're talking graduation requirements, and that would probably affect everybody, so then we talked about if everybody was going to need to take that class, you know, what would that ask be, and we could certainly run some numbers and get that in front of you guys, so you know what we'd be designing on.
Well, I want to be, I want to hear from, so we just heard there may be a funding request. All I'm saying, if there's a funding request from City, maybe you could put it together and help us understand it.
Sure, yep.
I'm not asking you to go, right? I'm just replaying what we heard.
Yep.
And then is there a barrier to the assembly? I'm looking at you, I know Greg's here, but is there...
So I think the only thing with the assembly, I would just, I guess, for me, I always want to know what do we want to accomplish, right? And what's the goal? And so then if we talk about the goals, then we can talk about the best way to achieve those goals. I think there's some nerves about what an assembly would potentially look like, and would it achieve those goals that you want to achieve? So I don't think anybody's against an assembly, but I think we'd want to know, is the assembly the best way to achieve, achieve those things you want to do? So initially, I think that was the reaction to trying to do something in a smaller group format, to understand about how you do a complaint, how you do some of those things that are probably received in a smaller group, but, so I don't think we're fundamentally opposed to a tech assembly, it's just, you know, what do we want to do, and what's the takeaway from leaving there, and is that then the best way to do it, so?
Yeah, I think that the, oh, go ahead.
Now, my question was going to be, you know, what did they do, what are they doing for Black History Month? What did they do for MLK Day? Because those would have been great opportunities to have that assembly, if a keynote speaker or something was coming in and specifically addressing that, you know, a long assembly, but can be about handling that. There's plenty of community folks, you know, I ain't even one of them in the school, but if they could come in and specifically, maybe talk about that, and you can also address the, the need, the reminder of what the students' rights and responsibilities, et cetera, might need, you know? I don't know.
Yeah, one opportunity maybe, if, if we continue to move forward with this workshop idea, you know, as our way to kick off that experience, you know, with that assembly-type format, to say, okay, this is what we're about today, this is what we're doing, you know, I, I want to give Greg a chance to respond if he has any thoughts, too, but that would be my sense there, you know, that, okay, we gather everybody together, state the purpose, you know, and then you could break into either different workshops or something like that. I'm not sure what that format would take, but I, at least that's what I'm kind of thinking about, as I hear you say that.
Yeah, so there's two things. One, your question on MLK and Black History Month, we're currently compiling all that information from principals, it's something that I think was sent out a couple weeks ago to kind of get that information. I think it's been something that the board has wanted the last two years I've been here, and so that was going to come down the, down to the board meeting, not this board meeting, but probably the next board meeting, just to get that information. And then as far as the assembly piece, I think as well, I think some of your comments were, was about, you know, whether or not people wanted to get to sit and get, or actually be interactive, and so I think that, you know, there was a component of the assembly that I think we talked about as far as, you know, being in that room, having some type of discussion, kind of what you were just talking about, Matt, getting together for a brief moment and then splitting up. I mean, even as we talked about, you know, having the different periods and having different folks in relation to different periods, I think was discussed, and so, again, that wasn't discussed at City High, but it was discussed at West, and so there's some, there's some things that we can do to make sure that it's getting the effect of, you know, notifying individuals, I think that you mentioned earlier, as far as, you know, getting that kind of, hey, this is important, these are the reason why we're doing it, but then also kind of incorporating the, the rest of the student-led piece.
I think that MLK Day and, like, Black History Month should be like a separate thing, though, because I feel like if we do this, people associate it with, like, learning about black people, or this is about black history, because this is a completely different thing, and it's super broad, and like, open to different things, and I feel like we definitely need to focus more on, like, learning more about MLK Day, like, on MLK and doing more, but, like, that should be a separate piece, because we're not just focusing on the history of black people, we're not just focusing on MLK, we're focusing on what we can do, or what we need to do to fix everything that's gone out, you know, or make it better.
So I think it is important to separate. I think maybe it's quite the assembly with the workshop at the beginning.
Yeah.
All these things, there's never a right answer, you decide what's best, you know what I mean? That's sort of looking, you know, again, really, my, my, we need to be getting your needs, so if you think that, you know, it's a way to go, then I think we should support that.
Do you, do you have, I know you talked to Mr. Striker, Mr. Booth, but do you have other teacher allies, or have you approached teacher allies who are willing to put forth, you know, and they're spread, they're spread thin, just willing to put forth? Yeah, there could be something, because you're doing an awful lot of impressive work, and many hands make the, make the load a lot lighter, so, and sometimes people who've been there, done that, or who have maybe different channels to work, that, you know, a different perspective, you know, might, might make it an easier lift. I'm just curious if you have those types of conversations, or invitations to other teachers, because I think there's, I think you'll find there's a lot of adults that have similar concerns and mindset.
I think there...
We have a list of teachers at West, I'm sure.
And like, in talks with, like, the class, I would say, when we were talking to the person, they said it'd be kind of hard to find, like, special arts teachers for the class, because they had an instance where there, there was a class that dealt with, I don't know what it dealt with, but, so, yeah, current events class, and so then the teacher who specialized in that class left. So there wasn't a teacher who was interested in, like, teaching about current events, or was it, like, hasn't involved, and so then...
You know, like, it'd be hard to find a teacher, because they suggested, like, an English teacher, but then they also said to learn about, like, the history and the art and the reading, and all the culture of, like, minorities and stuff, but there's also the social studies aspect of it, where you learn about, like, I don't know, like, like, the law and, like, in, like, if you want to...
I mean, add slavery, yeah, you wanted to add, like, the effects.
The effects and everything, so it would be hard for that, but we definitely have some teachers who have, like, come up to us and told...
She has a list, I think.
We have, we have Barum Jewel at West High, and Mr. Connor, was this, was this the last one? Yeah, Mr. Connor. And then there's Carmen, and then McGrain, and Ms. Head, and Ms. Allison. So those, they're also on the cultural competency committee.
Sure.
So that's what they, that's what Barum Jewel told us. And then there's also, gross, on this one, Street Barnhouse Johnson, and Jewel and Dr. Schultzen, those are on the implicit bias committee, but they've all suggested that they feel, like, behind helping us out with...
So, I mean, it's no secret that students have their favorite teachers. Students have teachers who are super popular all the time, year in and year out. It would be great to get somebody within your buildings to help spearhead. I mean, if it's having an assembly, it's one thing for, for you to get up there, you know, maybe nervous, and it'd be another thing to also have somebody, him, you know, be able to help coordinate everything. I mean, you guys are doing a heavy lift, you're doing a really heavy lift, and I just think that it might be nice to have somebody help, help with that, and if it's a, sort of a popular, you know, teacher of the year, favorite teacher every year type person to spearhead that, it could maybe navigate the wires a little easier.
Shuck, I mean, because Shuck is a head.
Shuck's pretty cool. Shuck's pretty cool. He's got a lot, he's got, he's got his team.
He's going to literary, though.
That's why I think you grow, because you've...
So, I, I'm wondering, though, could we give them funding for a club, so that, so that they have a sponsor, that is somebody who, you know, has, is a little more incorporated, it's not just a teacher who's given up their time, but it's actually a group that has some funding?
Yeah, if it's a, I'd look to students if that's the request, yeah, absolutely we'd do it.
I mean, like, SODA.
Yeah, I mean, like, robotics club has a coach, you know? The math team has a coach, you know? I mean, there's all kinds of clubs that are, Student Senate has a faculty person, and these people are paid an additional stipend to do this work, so.
And I understand that angle, but I think by making it a club, it would forego the class requirement, and a lot of people just would opt not to do that, which I don't think that would work with you, like...
Well, and I, I don't mean, I, I mean, like, a sponsor to, to help you organize your efforts.
Yes.
It's not that, it's not that it would be replacing all the things you're trying to do, that they would just help you facilitate this, just like math coach facilitates getting a team to a competition, you know, they would be facilitating you with the things you want to accomplish.
So, so I just want to replay, Kim, for the notes, right? So the requests were, one, funding, we talked some options, Matt's going to help put that together, get West's point of view, City's point of view. Two was an assembly, I think you talked about maybe linking it with the workshop. I don't know if there's anything we need to do to help.
We'll need funding for that, too.
Because I can come up with the funding. I don't know if there's anything else we need to do to help. It's out, and then the third thing was the class, which it sounds like you got the right people involved early, I think Latasha summed it up really well. We may need to approve it at the end or something, but we need to get the experts involved before we get to us.
Can, can we hear a little bit from our administrators about how does that happen? You know, if there were going to be a new class incorporated? I mean, one of the questions we sort of talked about a little bit earlier, you know, if you're talking about a one trimester class, it seems like the easiest time to do that it seems like the easiest time to do that is, the problem, I don't, I, it seems like you wouldn't want it to come too late in the K-12 cycle if it's gonna have the effects that, you know, that we want, so you want, it's not something you take when you're a senior, right? And I mean, I've sort of, I've wondered whether junior high might be the moment, but tell me, just how does it even start to happen?
Sure, so if we left here with the charge to, you know, go create a class that was a requirement for graduation or a requirement in junior high, we'd go back and we'd try to do some research on, you know, other comparable models. We'd bring you an example back of a course description, you know, a requirement of when students would take it, the length of time, and then I kind of see the cost in the class together, Chris, that we'd present both those hand in hand and say, here's the, here's the expense of doing this, it's gonna take this much additional staffing to work it into our schedule. Um, I think part of what you're talking about age-wise, we'd probably try to balance, you know, flexibility in student's schedule, interest, timing of when we think it would be most impactful, you know, the content that's gonna be in that class, you know, some of those things. I couldn't say right now where I think it fits best, but I think we rely on these guys for some feedback. We talk to our teachers and say, where would it make sense in a, in a sequence of events for kids to take it? And bring it back, a couple of proposals to look at.
But it could be top-down, but we're, it sounds like we're working on a lead model right now, right?
We're, I just think, I don't know that we're all talking about the same thing.
Okay.
I mean, if you're talking about a required class that every student has to take, that's very different than if you just create an elective class.
Right.
You know, people elect to take, or maybe they are told to take it because they need it, you know? But, because, I mean, I feel like I'm probably an expert on a couple of things, and one of them is the junior high curriculum and the space within that, you know, and it's pretty much the high school curriculum too. It'd be very hard to make it out of whole cloth, a new requirement that everyone has to, because it, whatever you put in pushes something out. So I just don't want to say, oh yeah, we're all on behind a required course, because, you know, we're, right now we have a minor change in how we're doing science, for example, but that could have major implications to our enrollments in performing music and foreign language and, you know, things down the road, just because, you know, how we do it. So there are, there's a lot of unintended consequences that definitely come into play as we do this. But as far as piloting a class, like one trimester elective class, yeah, that's something we can get behind and, you know, take.
The thing is, though, if you make it an elective, the people who aren't educator won't take it. You know, like if you make it an option, like people who don't want, like that's what happened last week for two years ago.
Yeah, so like, um, we before, I guess it was before last year, yeah, we had like, um, world religions, and then we had like North Eastern Studies. Ina, and like had all those different classes, and then like I have friends who, when you ask them about Judaism or any other religion, don't know anything about it, because all they took was world, like, um, European history. And now it's like, I feel like it's kind of the same thing, because it's like the kids who do need their minds open, I guess.
Don't take it.
Yeah, don't take those classes, and then there's no effect in the end, the people that we actually want the class to attend.
So then we start looking at, you know, there are other complications of certification, teacher certification, and, you know, if you put in a required course, you know, that all, um, 1,000 students in ninth grade, you know, are gonna take, and you're gonna have a number of instructors to do that, you know, and so, where does it reside? Is it right in social studies, is it right in English, what kind of certification do you need? Um, we, that's where, you know, Matt, so we look at comparable classes, you know, other, other schools that have classes like this. How have they gotten around that, you know, what are the, what are sort of the implications to that? Uh, but then you start looking at the curriculum, you know, where is the, where else could the curriculum fit? Where do we have it now?
That's what I was saying.
And, uh.
Content, not fair word for it, yeah.
And that's where, you know, it evolves into something else, but is there all roads you explore as you look into adding things into the curriculum?
Is there some options to get a little creative about this approach a little bit? So one, one thing that I'm thinking, I'm thinking more college than high school right now, but is there an option for this to be a self-study, I'm just throwing out a couple of ways that we can get some of this done. Can there be a self-study where there's a teacher that people are checking in with about, like something that they're reading and they're writing these things, and they can also be credited for, but it's not a stationary class, or maybe it's, they get together. So I'm just trying to be creative about the ways that we can do this. Yes, is it gonna be more beneficial to me on a weekly, and it doesn't have to be just one teacher, is the other thing. Can it be a different teacher each semester, trimester, sorry, about how we do this, because, um, I understand the, the elective piece, and I see how, I mean, I, I went to high school here too, I took China and Japan, that doesn't even exist anywhere. But I'm just saying, like, it was a class, it was an elective, that I could still get social studies credit for. Um, where I was able to explore and kind of learn more about that, so I'm just trying to figure out, can we get creative with self-study? Can we get creative about other ways that we can get some of this done?
Yeah, or does it involve, does it involve an advisory time, you know, curriculum rather than a classroom curriculum? These are all things.
What do you mean when you say curriculum?
A curriculum is a set of concepts that you would, and a plan of study that you're going to, you know, achieve, goals that you're gonna achieve over the course of any kind of organized classroom. So, you know, you map out what is it you're gonna learn and how are you gonna learn it, and that way you, when you map that out, you get a curriculum. So that's what we, we're looking at.
I honestly think that's, that would be part of our challenge, that's just part of our work, right? And so if you guys say this is the, this is the task, or this is the piece you want us to look at, then I think that's our team's job to go back and look at. Latasha has all those options and say, hey, where does this fit, what are some creative options to do this? So if we have a, you know, a charge to say it is a class, or it's a required experience, or, you know, whatever is on the table, I mean, I think those are the things we could spend time working on on our side to present back to you guys and say, hey, these are some things we could do to accomplish that, that goal. Even that scenario, you know, those are the things we'd account for with staff time, you know, what kind of staff times are gonna take, but I honestly think that's, you know, that's just our responsibility to look at that for you guys and give you all the information so you can make a decision, but. So I think the piece that would be helpful from us is just knowing, you know, what's the, what are we going after, what would you like us to achieve? And we'll definitely come back and present some options for that.
What?
Not that we know yet, really, really, it's kind of exploratory.
I'm, I'm looking for self-study, I'm looking forward to this, I couldn't elect it, I wanna look at this as what it looks like for a graduation requirement. I mean, just looking at those different ways of how we can do this, the costs associated with it.
And I need to.
Their specialization, which department would it fit in?
And then, to, to get to that, I need to know what the hit is, you know, exactly what is, you know, what are, and I, I'm not saying that they don't exist and they haven't been talked about, but I mean, we've heard everything from, you know, current events, you know, discussion, you know, to sensitivity training to whatever, and let's, so we define very clearly what it is that we're missing, and then we look at, what's the best way to teach it? What's the best way to get it across?
So I think that the easiest thing nationally is that a lot of school systems and school districts are specifically looking at ethnic studies classes, so that they're able to wrap in current events into that actual discussion. And actually, it has a lot of science proven around attendance, and actually, if we're gonna talk about climate survey, it has actually been able to help address some of those issues, so I think that's one place that you can start to look at it. Um, lots of different colleges specifically have cultural diversity requirements, uh, classes, and so I think we have multiple opportunities to narrow this down and come up with something that'll be suitable for our students. So I just don't want it to seem like it's not out there, it's not possible. You all can clarify if I'm way off, left?
No, no, you're, you're good.
But I, I, I think that it's, it's being done, it's being done, and there's been amazing results. I've been kind of going on this tangent about this class for a couple of years now, and I think, I think it's possible, and we can get it done, and if, you know, if they have a cultural diversity, they had one school, you know, and now we're going into a third high school. So these problems are gonna just travel, they're not gonna go away, I mean, that's obvious. So I think that we should be looking at this about entire impact on our entire district. And maybe this is a continuation of something that is included in all of our social studies from, I don't know, first grade or whatever, that we continue to build on this instead of making it as a one-shot, you got your immunity, now you're good to go, versus seeing that this is a complicated human issue that gets sealed in our brains at age three. And so I think that there's some opportunities here, when we're talking about implicit bias that even our students have, about how do we connect this along the way, so that by the time we're getting to our junior highs in high schools, that we're having less of these problems, that we're having more complex and eloquent discussions about difficult topics in ways that are not gonna be disrespectful to our other students, and that our staff be able to learn that same cultural responsiveness about how they talk to our students, and then we can minimize the negative impact that this has on our students, whether it's implicit bias or just outright discrimination. So I mean, and that goes across staff too, so I think it's possible, I just think it's about getting it, getting down to it and getting those detailed factors.
Um, yeah, I agree with Latasha, and also going back to like what you said about the curriculum. Like, in one class I have, we were learning something super like relevant, we were learning actually about like something political, something Donald Trump, and it like, students were engaged and we were super like into it, and this is something we wanted to learn, and then the teacher was like, we can't talk about this anymore, because I have curriculum things I have to follow. You know, and we don't want a class like that, and we've been doing some digging, and so there's like, um, ethnics, there's an ethnic department, ethnic studies at UC Berkeley, and there's this high school in Los Angeles, um, this district that has like a course description, and they do it, um, ninth through 12th grade. We found one in Seattle and one in Washington DC as well, and so, like she said, it's possible, and they have different units where one is like an identity unit, one is like different races, like sexuality, and so, and they had, they go in, like, we have like the links and stuff, and they go into like how you do it and what, like even, they have like a current events unit too, where, not unit, but like if something big were to happen throughout, like they're learning about something, like they'd stop for a minute or whatever and just talk about this, because this is happening right now, this is affecting our lives as we, like, they're living in it right now, and so, um, kind of like Latasha said, it can definitely be done. It's been done in different places, um, and it's a requirement, and you can take it from ninth through 12th year.
Yeah, and, um, the, okay, the worst thing about it is it doesn't go in chronological order, and so, like you say, if you were, um, because they just broke it up into, um, identity units, African-American unit, American Indian, Latin America, and Asian American, so if you were in the African-American unit, you wouldn't have to start all the way from like when the first African-American settled here. You would like, say like something like the Black Lives Matter protest happened, so then you would like, um, connect it to why is it happening? Uh, why is police brutality a thing? And if you were to talk about incarceration, then you would go all the way back to like slavery, so you wouldn't have to like go in chronological order, but then you would just connect it.
And these things aren't like, they're just not, like, we learn about them, but they're not built into like our curriculums like to dig deep enough. You know, you learn that slavery happened, you learn, you have like a short, like, not a short, but you learn about MLK, but you don't learn really deep into it, we never learned about like, we didn't go deep into African-Americans or, I mean, American Indian history in our, we learned about it like a little bit in eighth grade and ninth grade in American Studies, but we don't go into it now when we wanna go into it, you know, when we learn about the North Dakota pipeline. And so I feel like this would answer a lot of students' curiosities, and like, we genuinely are, we want to learn about this, you know? And it wouldn't be a class where, um, you have to stay on topic about one thing, where you have to talk about, if this is a curriculum, we have to follow this, I have no choice, because I have to, this is the district's plan or whatever, like if this happened, if something were to come up, like the North Dakota pipeline, police brutality, anything like that, we could talk about it, we can have discussions about it, you know what I'm saying?
And I don't know if you guys want me to read out a short little paragraph about it. Um, the major purpose of this course is to educate students to be politically, socially, and economically conscious about their personal connections to local and national history. Ethnic Studies focuses on themes of social justice, social responsibilities, and social change. The course spans from past to present, from present and other soc- societies, including their own. This cour-, this course will focus on the experiences of African-Americans, Asian-Americans, Latino-Americans, and American Indians. This course will also include an identity section, which means we'll consider concepts related to their own personal, group, or nationality, identity.
And, um. Like, this will honestly prepare us for the real world. You know, like everything that I'm learning, it prepares us for college, and it prepares us for like, I don't know, math and science and English, but this will prepare us on how to function as members of society. You know, how to, how to connect with other people, how to have, live with other people, you know, other outside of school where you're forced to be with them, how to have connections with them, I feel like this is, I don't know, more like it's incredibly important, yeah.
And I think the. Try to say is, this isn't just a class we want people to take, just to take, it has a lot of portable skills, and it would benefit anyone who took it, yeah, and I think.
What separates it from like a regular history course is the connection to history, from history to what's happening now. And that's the part that mi-, that we miss, that keeps causing this cycle to repeat itself, is what, is the fact that people don't understand how what happened before affects us now, and what happens now affects us now. So for that, I do think that is a very beneficial potential to take it, and not just because it's a class and it's required, but also because it's, if you get a lot of skills out of it.
Just, you can, even beyond the density aspect of it, I think this class could be something that handles other problems, but in this age of technology where information comes at the touch of a button, it could handle the fake news epidemic. We can learn how to fact-check things or process information that could be coming our way, and it would just be extremely beneficial.
I think shifting back to logistics, um, there is, it's important enough that like we may have some flexibility between eighth grade and ninth grade here, because I know that, I'm not sure if it was at us, but for us, um, eighth grade, we had American Studies, and then ninth grade, again, we had, um, a US history requirement, which for me, I didn't feel like was very meaningful, because we kind of just took two years of American History, which had been something that we'd kind of been studying since kindergarten, and so it was just, so if there was, um, a place to look for a possible, um, required course, I think that that would be an interesting spot for, um, like between a big shift.
Another thing is, yeah, we learned, yeah, we have help in eighth grade, and then we have help again in ninth grade, and it's literally learning the same stuff we've been learning since fourth grade, and so, I mean, I don't know, like kind of what she said, that would be a part where you can look at it and work on it, like.
Like in eighth grade, learn more factual content, and then ninth grade is how it applies to us, how can we use this?
Yeah.
Well, and to that health piece, um, you know, this, it has been information to share with you, and, um, I'm not necessarily sure I can share it, but, um, the school counselors have been doing a considerable amount of work as far as how they can incorporate, um, variety of different curriculum as well, and so we've had a couple of conversations that happened, it started with the Ed Camp that, um, Matt kind of led, around how we can tie in some of the social conversations that we're having now, for social justice issues into the health curriculum. Um, obviously, there's a ton of things as far as LGBTQ, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that I think that frankly, from the curriculum, the, the school counselors said that they were missing, that they thought needed to be incorporated, um, not only, um, in the secondary, but also the elementary as well. To your point about, you know, it is somewhat consistent, so what are things that they can change and enhance with the curriculum that I think would, um, uh, make it a better class for students that are participating overall? So there's, there's a couple of things that are happening, not only from a student perspective, but also from a teacher perspective as well.
The class, um, again, if we can sort of go through a process and develop some kind of proposal, I mean, how far out are we before this is a class?
Well, if, again, like Greg said, if it's, if it's an elective, much quicker that we can incorporate something. If it's a required experience you want everybody to do, I mean, realistically talking about, you probably wouldn't approve that until next fall, in the middle when you approve that, approve that program of studies, which means it wouldn't take effect for those students until the following academic year.
Why? Why does it take so long? I mean, why can't we?
Right now, we're registered, we already register for classes for next year. So if you were to put a, a required class in for next year, uh, it would cause us to re-register every single student, you know, differently. They'd have to choose all different courses, because this would take the place of something, or it would push something out of the way. So it's not a process that can happen overnight, uh, to have a required class that hasn't been developed yet, to all of a sudden, you know, reschedule students, and they're not, not the least of which, we have to get teachers to teach it. And we have to know what the curriculum is in order to get the teachers to teach it.
We can get your curriculum by next week if you want.
But we also.
I don't think we need to focus on the technicalities.
I know you said some of the, some of the content in the, the courses, I know that, um, it may not be the most.
I mean, I don't think we need to focus on the technicalities, because I feel like this is a class that would, like I said, teach us how to be functioning members of society.
Not saying that we shouldn't do it, it's gonna take a time.
No.
And that's fair.
I, I, I appreciate your, uh, passion and wanting it, we're a super tanker. Like a big ship at sea, you throw the wheel, it's like, I wanna turn right, we're turning right. It takes a long time before that thing starts to break apart, so it's, uh, don't, don't get the fact that it's gonna take some time, that there's any lack of, of, uh, passion on our side.
Right.
It's just unfortunately, there's a process, the process takes a time. Uh, right now, we're kind of in the middle of, middle of the, where the process has already started for the, for the next year, so, it, it, it is, unfortunately, it is what it is, and it's gonna take some time, but, but please don't think that we're delaying you or putting you off.
But I know that's frustrating, right, and I think that's why those other pieces you guys are talking about are important, about, okay, how do we not lose the conversation while we wait on this huge organization to move along, right? So there's that long-term piece we have to do, but you also did a nice job at the beginning articulating, what do we do right now? Okay, so what do you do in the meantime? And have these conversations, workshop format, try to involve students in a less structured, less formal way. Well, then the long-term win is, you, you, for generations changed, you know, potentially, what that student experience looks like as they go through school. So I think you can have the balance of, while the organizational, organization piece will take a long time to work out and structure something and get a formalized piece potentially, you can still do these things in the middle and, and try to engage that conversation and continuing to have that, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't get distraught or frustrated in that part, because you can also know you're gonna be working on this in the meantime, and we can keep moving those things forward as we go. And I know that's why Kingsley started where he did with you through that format, because he knows, you know, structurally what we're up against a little bit.
I like to push, keep pushing, but recognize it's gonna be a journey.
And anything worth doing is worth doing right. Because you'd rather do it right, carefully, methodically, than do it wrong and have it fail.
But you're thinking even an elective would probably not be something you, at this point, we could do next year?
I mean, we pilot things, you know, that's where I would probably see, you know what, but, again, the process to do this isn't you go and copy somebody else's, you know. But again, the process to do this isn't you go and copy somebody else's, you know, curriculum. Uh you decide which where you want to go with it and you get per you know, teaching professionals in the room. You know, that are passionate about the subject. We have teachers that are passionate about the subject. And you s- you make it fit what you how you want to do it. And it's it's not a it it shouldn't be a quick process. I don't think. It should be thoughtful, but that doesn't mean it can't. You know, we could pilot something sometime next year. It just would in involve, you know, us, you know, finding the kids to do it and 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 doing a pilot project.
I think there's pieces of the content you could be piloting throughout. You know, we have advisory times. You know, if there was some kind of content or discussion that wanted to be structured through those, through the workshop times. I mean, you could be to Dr. Schultz's point, you could be building the content as you're having these conversations for what you're going to incorporate into the class. I mean, we could do an elective and you could put it together and you could structure it every day. Would that be as effective as maybe some of these other things we could do in the interim? I'm not so sure it would, you know, and I'd rather the class be an instant success from what do we get it right away and that we do that part right? And how do you structure in some other opportunities in the meantime, maybe?
And there are other opportunities. And we do major changes when we go from six to seven, when we go from eight to nine. And uh I know that now John, if he were here, I think he'd probably agree with me that we can do more when our kids enter ninth grade. You know, we can look at your program that we do at that point, you know, to establish some of these. Now, you're talking about some larger team things. I keep hearing, you know, North Dakota Pipeline and you know, Black Lives Matter, whatever. I mean, those are we're all here with it, but if we can target, you know, what we talk about, you know, identity studies. We can talk about, you know, how do we treat one, you know, as we enter into a large community like West High School? I think we can take some bits and pieces of that and get it going immediately, you know, and we can say, when you enter as a ninth grader, you're going to have this experience where you're going to be, you're going to know, these are pro procedures involving, you know, equity issues. These are, you know, uh set rules that everybody's going to get. In the meantime, we can look at, you know, other experiences you can have. I mean, I spent just over the weekend, you know, two hours doing training for the University of Iowa. We teach a class, you know? We can, it was, you know, there's ways to do this, there's other ways, like you know, you said, Latasha. I think we can explore those as we build the capacity to maybe have this more robust thing going on here that we're talking about. Because I am very supportive of an ethnic studies class. I mean, that, you know what, Allah Red was right in my line of thinking. Of something that I think our city in West, Liberty High School in this community, we should have that kind of experience. I'm I do think that's a good idea, but I can't tell you that it's going to happen next year.
I had another point to bring up. So the ACLU has a booklet and I know the SUDS talked about this on students' rights. Um it's called Know Your Rights or something like that. I found it in the book today. But I found it to be really helpful. It outlines what rights students have within a school building, what they can and can't say or what they are and are not allowed to do. And I think if we could get this ACLD booklet distributed um within every school building, maybe put it in libraries or classrooms or hand it out even, I think that would be really helpful.
So what you all were talking about is multiple things to get to the mountaintop, basically. So I think what we need to do is find a visual way to be able to show these uh short bursts of interventions with the long-term systemic change is what you're looking for. And so I think these opportunities for self-study and or or um using advisory times to have meaningful discussion type things. I think those are like those immediate things, the piloting of the program, turning it into a no lack of that could potentially turn into a requirement. Um or make this class so engaging, everybody want to take it anyways. I think those are things that you all are talking about systemic change. And that's that's kind of what Bill was trying to trying to get at with the boat analogy. Um and so I I think what you all have started, I I want to I want to uh make sure that you know that we appreciate the wave. You know, because sometimes you need a wave of change to come through to make people start looking and thinking about things differently. And so but uh we'll keep biting off this really, really big burger um as much as we can. And so I think we're starting with these small things and what goes towards those big things, I think will be really um really helpful. But some of you all are graduating, right? So but we don't want this energy to go. So my my request to you personally is who do you reach for behind you? To make sure they keep the same energy. Because when you all are doing your studies and you bog down and you can't remember where you put your phone because it's that rough, we need some other people that are still going to come and keep keep this this group going. And so um that those are important about systemic changes, succession planning about who's next behind you all. Some of you are still young, but who else is coming behind you that can still take the same energy so we can get that over time?
And part of that, you know, being helpful to have uh uh the established club with te- you know, with support and funding. But you can go back to funding to make sure there is that we have younger, you know, younger students, you know, that are involved in carrying the torch forward. You don't need to stay here forever.
I don't want to worry about it. I'm still a junior. I feel like everything I should talk to the.
So like one.
Yeah, that's her funding.
Well, you're true. You have meetings that are alternating schools.
Or invite somebody to something, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And invite.
Yeah.
All right, just bring us back to one conversation and um is there anything else we want to talk tonight?
Well, I just had a quick question about this qu- this class that we're, you know, sort of discussing whether it will be required or elective or maybe uh you know, self-study. This will be at Liberty too, right? We're thinking it will be at Liberty as well.
I think it's looking at our secondary education, so that would be across all of us, right? Am I correct?
Yeah, no, I think the option we would bring forward and work with you guys on, we would, you know, consider that as something all our secondary students would need to participate in.
Good question. So when do you think we can have the next conversation?
About the class specifically?
Well, I took away three things. Funding, assembly, class slash curriculum. Just in case it's could be class, could be curriculum. You guys got to help me say things. Uh but you know, I know it's not tomorrow, but.
Sure. I mean, I think we can be back to after spring break with a pretty good framework of what a class could look like. It's potential alternatives.
It's maybe like April, early April?
Yeah.
You know, when I hear Lucian talk about the class, every time I hear Lucian talk about the class, I think this class sounds so good. I just can't wait to take this class. Like we should just, you know, hire you to teach the class. But uh it sounds to me a little bit like it reminds me a little bit of what I hear about the um seminar class that some of the kids take at junior high, you know?
It caps them, I think is an option.
All right.
But yeah, I've. So now you say that, I have heard similar things about seminar when I was in eighth grade.
But not everybody takes seminar, I guess, so that you want to, you know, the scale issue is still there. But uh you know, that could be sort of a way to think about, is there a way to transform that existing class? I don't know. Something you can think about.
I just feel like if we do it during junior high, it won't stick as much with people's minds.
Yeah, it might be true.
During high school, everything sticks for like much better.
It's true.
It's a lot more people too, so you'll be able to apply your skills to a larger audience.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um but even then, even then, maybe the model of that type of class, you know, a different year uh could be something I'm worried about.
I'm pretty confident we can come up with a high level class and I think these guys, you know, will be one of the first people we look at for input once we are able to see some existing models or some existing structures we have and say, hey, you know, what do you what do you guys think of this? And uh try to get some feedback from some students to see, is this what we're talking about? And then we can bring that forward. So I think there's a lot of good existing models. Like Greg said, you know, this this should fit right into what our community believes and supports, so.
We probably need to make sure we um whether it's through this group or another, provide background support for kids as they're going through this, because you can only talk for so long. You need some other place sometimes. If there's a, I just think about, you know, I work with a large group of of kids and when there's an immediate thing, the death of another teen or something. Sometimes they talk about it in class or sometimes like at the end of the school day when I'm there, it's like the of everything. And so it would be nice if there was some option of whether it's this group or not, where that where it's funded, where there's a teacher that can also be willing to help having that discussion and make it open forum sometimes for kids. Regardless of what grade they're in, they want to be able to come back. Because I think that's something right now that's missing. If if something happens, who do I go to in my school? Cause you know, it used to be back in the day with the guidance counselor and you go in and you shed your tears and you go back and they give you a pass. But now our guidance counselors don't necessarily do that anymore. And so where do we create these safe spaces and opportunities for our kids right now when things are happening right now? Because this stuff happened just this week. So I mean, where do they go tomorrow? I think we need to start talking about where is that safe place to go um that they can be able to debrief this with other students, regardless of what grade they're in, if they're in that school.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too. And I was wondering what the role that guidance counselors do play.
That's um actually kind of like what you were saying. That's part of our thing, which is like devoted national specialists who must be readily available to students to talk to. And we talked about counselors, but like I said, like you said several times, counselors are like there for grades, they're for schedule. And so um if they could have, I we heard City had this therapist.
I did not know.
I have a question. I already don't know anything, but if the juniors and seniors don't know that that bridge that there's a problem with the accessibility of information. And I think we really need to work on making information more accessible to everyone.
You know, I've had the same, I guess I lived in the world that you were describing where I would think that the uh entry point there would be the guidance counselor. Maybe that's just not true anymore, or maybe there's it's a misperception that it's.
Maybe it it is, but I don't think the kids, at least. I don't think that they perceive them in the same way that we used to back in the day, you know? I mean, I have to talk to my guidance counselor, okay? But I'm just saying, like, they don't have, that's not the same way that I see them interacting with their guidance counselors in that same. I'm not saying that some of them are not open in that way, but it seems like that they think in their head, this is who I go to if I need to make a change in my schedule. Not necessarily just someone I go to for emotional support.
Well, I mean, if it is though, someone who could go to, maybe we just need to.
Right, I think we need to find a way to identify them.
Or if not, then there is certainly a gap there.
But I think there also needs to be a dichotomy there because me personally, I would feel very uncomfortable knowing that I had just like poured my heart out to the same person that will help me get a scholarship.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, separate.
But that could be helpful too, when you tell you.
I mean, I would just interject that there are plenty of tears shed in the guidance counseling office, I'm sorry to say, you know? Um I mean, they, some students identify that as the place to go and they certainly do get a lot of business for personal support. A lot of times does guidance counselor is the one who coordinates support though, identifying with the student where where they can go. We do have two, you know, uh family advocates, I guess is the official title that they do that, you know, work with kids. But these are hot, we have a lot of needs and only two of them. And it doesn't surprise me that.
Well, going on to what uh Mariam said, if he's that institutional system is to be accessible, I didn't even know that we had, I don't even know that it is.
And when you're stressed out, I mean, you know, we we definitely the the service finds you, you know, in that case. I mean, that's that's the one we have now.
But I don't think I don't think we need to wait till service finds us. I think we need to be able to go find service.
Has this has the student advisory time taken over homeroom or is there still a homeroom?
We don't have a structure like that.
Really?
It's like every other Thursday we have like.
I think kind of two things you talked about with student support there is like what who are the professionals that can take care of whatever that specific need is? And how do we get them hooked into that? And then another thing we talk to our students a lot about is um and the part we could probably do a better job on is, you know, trusted adults, right? And they think that's something. So as we have these conversations or if you get into those heavy topics, it'd be important for students to know, okay, who are your trusted adults? Are you do you feel like you're connected to somebody? Because it doesn't necessarily go by position, right? It might be a guidance counselor, it might be an administrator, it could be a fellow teacher. That's a good entry point, but that might not be the long-term support they need connected with either. So even more so than articulating all that long-term support, I think sometimes it's like, do they know who to go to? If they start to feel that way, that can help them get connected to the system. Because the system's always going to be large and it's always going to be hard to access. So I think those are some of the things we'll just have to pay attention to because you're right. You can't go to have this heavy conversation second hour and then go on sometimes and pretend like your day is just fine afterwards, right? I mean, there's going to be some big things that are potentially uncovered and discussed and dealt with here. So those things we'll have to be very intentional about making sure we know how to get kids connected and our staff are familiar with those processes so they can help facilitate that.
I feel like the problem is that it doesn't need to be required to access. I mean, I was I was doing um an article for a newspaper on sexual assault and then that's when I learned that we had like a health specialist who helps with that. But uh I didn't know that we had someone there as like an emotional counselor, was I saying? Um so I just think if we just had a professional in the building, just knowing that there's someone there that we can talk to. I mean, I had it in elementary school and junior high I went to and down south in Georgia. But like when I got here, I expected it to like high school students and we have like just like really crazy like little. And everything, I just thought that we would have someone there. So it's just like surprising that we don't and I think we should put one as soon as possible.
More of a stationary person that can connect you to the resource that you're in.
Maybe there should be more awareness, like we know there's a high school school.
Yeah.
This is my first time ever with therapists like ever.
Yeah, someone from City used to come to like, she's busy today, but she told us you guys have a therapist and nobody knows about them, but they have like a tiny room somewhere in your.
I don't know.
We just need to work on information and distribute it out to students.
Well, that's where I was going on the uh homeroom and the advisory time. Uh maybe we should be trying to disseminate the information at that time because that's when you have smaller groups. Especially if, you know, you were still talking about the complaint process and maybe some students not knowing exactly how to access it. And the smaller, it seems you can kind of answer those questions and let everybody know how to do that.
And I think that would be a good idea for short-term building even now. Um when I was at Southeast last year, we had enrichment or advisory enrichment for that Little Hawk time. And there was a book club, there are coding class that you could opt to take. And I think if we wanted to get that diversity class out soon, we could do that in the short term. We can have that uh enchantment or enrichment for advisory and then build off of it.
That's exactly what I was thinking. I think there'd be some opportunities for us there to do something quickly, you know, have some people help us facilitate those conversations, access that time, so.
And that's what I think Lucian meant when she said that it wasn't something that had to wait much for there.
And maybe like to differ from the, we have a similar thing in our last last year. Instead of like for the coding in four walls, is that an example?
Book club.
Book club. Um instead of it being like an optional, if you want to learn how to code or whatever, you know, that you decide to go, maybe we could do like a class or two, go every day. So it's just like that's what your whole class that you're in for fifth period will go to. Instead of just like the kids who want to, because like how you were saying, um Lucian before, how like the kids who want to take it are often the kids who don't need it quite as much.
So wouldn't it be like you would you wouldn't be staying in the same class during advisory, you'd go to somewhere else for a class?
Oh, I suppose one of the teachers, the person could come there.
We we talked about this earlier about how not all classes, you know.
Did you have to prepare to have these types of conversations in a safety room?
Yeah, like I'll feel that, you know, my English class, you know, is way more open to this discussion than, you know, my chemistry class or something.
Or math or something. But yeah, I agree with that.
Hmm, oh, I think we should have that worked, but um I feel like in any lesson for short term, I don't know if you guys want to do that after school. But Jane, Rainie, Jane and I, we started this thing called Join the Conversation where um we would like to um broadcast like one topic every day during um Thursday.
Once a month.
Yeah, once a month, once a month on Thursday. And um.
And, um, so we would just like kick on an issue, we're interested in like, drop off magic, and we just talk about it over like, on like TV or whatever, live, we have like people tweet at us, like their opinions on what they think about this and that's to do that, so.
Controversial talk.
Create some sort of anonymous open forum.
It's just a place where we can talk, you know, like in school, you don't even want to talk except to your friends, you know? We want an open place, open platform to just talk about whatever.
All right, anything else for tonight? Well, as we think about winding down, I want, on math aboard, I want to thank you, thank you, thank you for your leadership in your schools and, um, you know, I guess we should expect nothing less from City, Weston, Dayton. I mean, you do a great job on academics, you do a great job of leadership and culture in your school and you do a great job in the community. But I just wanted to leave, uh, thanking you for the work you're doing in your schools. And change happens from within, right? That's where, you know, you get top-down and sometimes that works, but when it happens from within, usually that's the best. So thank you for everything you're doing. Did, did this work for you? Was this good? Worked, it worked for us, I think, looking around, but everybody feel good about, I thought, uh, your preparation and I thought it was outstanding, so thank you.
We, we received a lot of, as board members, we received a lot of feedback from members of our community and I just want to compliment everybody who has emailed board. I'll tell you, if you guys are the future, y'all communicate your points a lot better than some other people in this, in this community, so really appreciate the positive ideas and thinking outside the box and cooperative nature of having a discussion, right, than just shouting at us.
All right, for the board members, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All fair or say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, any opposed? Yeah, but just before we do that then, um, I think we'll target April, would you like to do this same format?
Because they have to, um.
They'll have to bring this back.
If you do some Friday and.
But I'm pretty sure they'll check in with you all before they check in with all of us.
Yeah, we should be, exactly, the next connection should really be.
So in the meantime, there are some things that we can be pondering and doing.
I think that City and West should have meetings that we can get, so we can all see.
Yeah, before April, yeah.
Everybody's on the group chat, I think this one is.
Yeah. So yeah, um. Permission to do the workshop? Like, do we have permission to?
I think Kingsley and I work with you guys, building principles and work with you guys about how to do those workshops and where to go that way. So I think we have a pretty clear direction that we need to pursue those interim opportunities while we build this class. So I think that's where Director Deloche San will be in touch with you guys to make sure we're keeping that conversation moving forward while we're building the long-term class, so.
That's why we should.
Does that mean City will be of our greater collaboration?
Yeah, because I think we should definitely go save those classes.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Do you guys have all of each other's contact information?
Are you ordering your numbers?
All right, thank you, this meeting is adjourned.